Okay. I'm going to call to order this meeting of the Winchester School Committee at 6:10 PM on October 25th. We had just a few technical challenges to work out, so thank you to those of us who are joining us. The meeting has just started about 10 minutes late, so I think we have those managed now, and we're going to jump right into the meeting. The first portion of the meeting will be public comment. I'm just going to remind everyone of our public comment rules. Public comment shall be for a period of 20 minutes. Any citizen wishing to speak before the committee shall identify themselves by name and address and shall speak for no longer than three minutes. No citizen may speak more than once without permission of the chair. Public comment is not a discussion, a debate, or a dialogue between the citizens in the committee. It's a citizen's opportunity to express their opinion on issues of school committee business. I did not see anyone sign up when I came in for public comment. Is there anybody? Excellent. Then we will move right into the superintendent, student rep, and chair remarks. Both of our student representatives were otherwise engaged this evening, so they are not with us to make any remarks. I'd just like to start out first by acknowledging the Winchester Special Education PAC for their signs that they have installed around town. It is ADHD, dyslexia, and Down syndrome awareness month. And they have added some signs to our school buildings and town buildings to help people learn a little bit more about those neurodiverse and how the students are welcomed as part of our community. If you haven't noticed them, please do check them out. They do have a code at the bottom if you'd like to learn more about Winnipeg itself. And I just wanted to congratulate them for those. I also wanted to extend our thanks to Karen Conley and Wiffy for another successful author fest. It was, I know Ms. Boulonais was able to attend some of the elementary authors. And, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah. And Mr. Hopcraft, Ms. Boulonais, and myself were able to attended the middle school. And I have to say that we are using some of the writing strategies that we learned from the middle school author. With my kids at home, they've referred back to some of them. And we were able to go get a book signed after school hours too, which was really exciting for my youngest. And the line out the door of other kids who were there to then be able to meet an author face-to-face person that they had heard speak about the writing process and many of the same struggles that they have really realistic information about struggling with writer's block and where ideas come from. So just, I can't thank you enough for being sponsoring for us. The last thing I have is just a reminder to the folks in town. Monday, October 31st is Halloween. Kids will be out trick-or-treating. Please just use caution as you drive around town. All of our little friends will be out in their costumes, excitedly hopping from house to house and getting candy, so remember speed limits in town. And parents, remember to wear those reflective items on your kids. It is dark out this time of year. And a huge thank you to our educators for managing post-Halloween letdown on Tuesday morning. I just wanted to thank them for that in advance. And that is all I have. Did any of the other members have anything else that they wanted to share about anything around town? Excellent.
I am all set, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Sure. So with that, we will move on to our consent agenda items. There are two items on the consent agenda. One was the approval of a revised 2022-23 school calendar. We are having to do this to correct the last day of school, moving it from June 15th to June 14th, which is actually a day earlier. I hear kids cheering everywhere, assuming there's no snow days. When the calendar was developed, the 185th Professional Development Day was counted as an actual school day. So we are pushing the last day of school actually back by one. And the other are trip approvals. We have three trips that we're looking to approve. There are world language exchange trips to France, Spain, and Italy. It's exciting to see those come back. And also exciting to see come back is the music department clinic and performance that happens at Walt Disney World. The trips here have been presented to this committee in the past. They are very similar to what has happened in the past with known travel groups that our staff have worked with in the past. So they have a solid history with us and all of the details were in your packet. And if nobody has any items to move out of that consent agenda, I will accept a motion.
Madam Chair, I have a clarification and then a suggestion on a motion.
Sure.
So just with respect to the calendar change, which I support, a question at the superintendent. I'm assuming this also backs up the last day for seniors. This is not something that's on the calendar, but it is communicated elsewhere. If that's the case, can we just be sure that's getting communicated to those students and their families?
Yes, we will. We'll send out a communication tomorrow, the next day. We'll send out the revised calendar as well.
Okay. And then, Madam Chair, with respect to the consent agenda, which I support, our usual, our usual action with respect to these trips is to approve with the understanding that the superintendent has singular authority to cancel the trip if world events require. And so if you would permit me to do so, I'd move to approve the consent agenda with the understanding that for the high school trip approvals included, that Dr. Hackett has the authority to cancel the trip should world events require.
Excellent. Roll call vote. Mr. Nixon?
Aye.
Ms. Boulonais?
Aye.
Mr. Hopcraft?
Aye.
Mr. Brady?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and we approve the consent agenda items. Thank you, everyone. And I look forward to hearing about the return to student exchange trips, so that's really exciting. The next item on our agenda, I'm wondering if it would be possible to take the agenda items out of order with the permission of the committee and invite Ms. Conley up to the table to share the Wiffy grant approval. I'm looking around for consensus. Welcome.
Just move everything around. Is this the right chair?
That is the right chair.
Excellent. Yes, so I come to you tonight with nearly $30,000 in grants, which represents the first grants we would give for this school year. We now have tried to go back to our cycle that we have a grant deadline in fall, one in February, and then one in the spring. But of course, we're always open if there's a truly fabulous idea that comes up. So I think these are interesting grants. I don't know if you have particular questions. I would point out, we are hearing a lot now related to literacy, reading, always fundamental to everything that we have supported over the years. We have two different elementary schools that have written grants to diversify the curriculum, and they're very different. One is a much bigger grant at Lynch because they have a very broad and overarching program. As we discussed this, we decided what we would do is reach out to the other schools that haven't written a grant and indicate that we're certainly open to their ideas. But I think what we found in the past is if we go to an elementary school, or any school really, and go to an educator and say, "Your fellow educator at this school wants to do this. Why didn't you just take that on and do it yourself?" It doesn't tend to go well. You know, it's better that it bubbles up organically. And I suspect we will see additional requests, just as when we first funded flexible seating, Lincoln was the first school that was very interested. And then, as time went on, all of the elementary schools actually were there to answer that. The other large grant, which I think is kind of exciting, is at the high school, which is for Learning Center 4. It's the Encore Supplemental Curriculum. And your news fed director has worked with that in a previous district and was excited about it. And the school is very interested in it. And this is one, you know, we come with caveats that we're not going to support this on an ongoing basis. This is not inexpensive. And we gave the grant with the understanding that if it's in fact successful, they will endeavor to get their funding from the district. But they accept the grant, understanding that if they can't, if there isn't district funding, then we're not going to come back and backfill. So I think those are, those are the ones I would call to your attention. But any other questions y'all have, I'm more than happy to answer.
Could you scroll back up?
Sure.
The other one I actually wanted to call out, maybe ask is about the math and more grant, because I did notice a lot about diversifying the classroom libraries. I also noticed that this was interesting because it talked about math learning disabilities, which we don't talk about as often or enough as other. Can you tell us a little bit more about that?
I'll tell you my most exciting thing first. I learned a lot of people say dyscalculia. That's not how they say it. It's dyscalculia. So begin it a little bit as the math equivalent of what we talked about with dyslexia. So Julie McManus-Gorman really headed this up, and she just sent me the data today. So the district will fund, because we have so many people that want to do this, that the district will fund the other half of all the people that had signed up to the PD account. And we have a nice representation across buildings and from different roles. So we're excited, you know, now that we have this position with Julie, to be able to do more of this to look at funding disabilities around math and how we can exploit that as well. And she first did the work, her took the course herself to make sure that this is something that would be helpful to the teachers.
And it was, in speaking to Julie when she first presented the grant, it was always good to hear that her approach was then going to go out to the district and to educators and to try to solicit across all of the school's folks that would want to attend. And so we're always delighted when we have representation from all of the schools who immortalize it, figuring that the district is going to fund additional PD. So that's making the money go even farther. That's great.
And because we got so many people, then we got to vote discount too.
It gets better by the minute.
Can't afford not to do it.
I think it's still a lot of money.
The beauty of a Wiffy district collaboration here in the moment.
Exactly.
There you go. And, and that is exactly what we're ever to do with these grants. So very pleased to hear Julie. I actually got to see her today. She did give me a heads up that there would be additional folks coming. So that's really cool. And it's, it's also exciting when you see that educators respond so quickly. And so obviously, she's on to something, right? She's presenting to them something they very much want to work on, and so the groundwork is laid. So I think this will, I think this will be a great grant. I'm delighted that we're going forward with it.
And they'll do PD back out to other people who can do the whole thing with this, so that other people can do this.
That's great. Well, and hopefully open up some conversations that we wouldn't otherwise be able to have or have had too. I'm sorry, Mr. Brady, that's fine.
So thank you. This is really wonderful. Thank you for the generous gifts. And what I really like about it is that it catalyzes innovation. And, you know, the separating out, not pegging on what operational, you know, someone adopts something. Makes total sense that that would give your ability to keep catalyzing innovations. We wanted to try and things if they weren't, but wrap them into what we're doing. I was curious if you are doing or have thought about making successful grant applications available for all the schools. As I see, you know, Lynch has a fairly large one, that if a teacher wasn't really sure, you know, what they should look like, or what's been done, or was it successful? And maybe to flip through them and see, oh, it's that hard, whatever.
It actually, these aren't up because I haven't officially approved them, waiting for this. But there is a function on our website that you can search for grants. I don't know that it's that effective, because a lot of teachers don't seem to realize they can do that. So I think that's a good point. And I think we still have some work to do to try to provide resources to teachers now that we're back in a more normal school setting to say, you know, this is what you can do if you want to write a grant. These are some people in your building that are good at writing grants. I think that's always an ongoing process. But I will put these up, and you can look. If you look in the upper, I think it's the upper right-hand corner, and it says, "Search Grants." But it doesn't give the full grant. It gives a summary of it.
Oh, I just wanted to stick that I really appreciate the diversifying library question and the grant for Lynch Elementary. We all belong there. I just think it's, it's another step in just enabling our students to be able to engage with many different perspectives. And this is all in line with our state standards, so I really appreciate it.
And, and again, this was an area that we reached out to Jen and said, you know, does the district not have money to afford books? And what we heard was that the district is indeed spending money on this, but that there are the folks that are a little more forward-looking, a little faster-moving, and they would like to move more quickly. And so that was why we wanted to, to accept that as well. You know, it's, it's again, that that line that would be, it's always tried not to cross, but would be crossed rather dramatically, between what should be funded with the public dollar and what should be funded privately. And that, I think, is always a fun discussion, both in this district and other places. So that's, yeah, I think these are, you know, you mentioned innovation. One of the grants was a student innovation grant from a high school student. We do, as you remember, a couple of years ago, we started offering up to $1,000 to a student who's working on a project with an educator. And I do love those, and I would for any child sitting at home and nanny care. Talk to your child. We don't want parents writing these, and we don't want kids writing innovation grants that don't tie into something with their teacher. But boy, we get some great ideas. And, and this is the second grant that we funded that's helping out the high school tech team with, with upgraded technology. I cannot begin to understand exactly what it does, but I think Nate understands it. And when I ordered it for him, where we ordered it from was very excited that it was a high school and was going to be using it. And you're like, "What are you doing with it?" I'm like, "Do you have an interwines school?"
Step back.
How it was transforming the auditory. It was cool.
But it is cool. And again, how it works, asking.
Yes.
I think you said your student innovation grants are a role basis.
Yes, and we do understand students have less patience than educators. So we decide within two weeks. And we actually allow students, if they want to apply, not using that form. But if they want to do a video, for instance, and we did have an elementary school student several years ago that did a video.
That's nice.
So we're open to it being appropriate to the age. And, and if you look at that online form, it's pretty open-ended and pretty easy. And if we have questions, we can reach back to the educator, you know, to say, is there something else that, that you can fill in the details for us?
Just thank you. Thank you for all the work you do. Thank you to your board too, because I know that you have a whole team of people with you too that looked through these and are incredibly thoughtful, both about this and the event run. So you don't thank all of our volunteers enough, so thank you to them too.
Well, I thank you to all the Winchester parents who contribute, because that's where the money comes from. And if anybody is so moved to feel this is the right moment, Wiffy just launched an online auction of experiences for students, but also for adults. And all of the proceeds from that will go to the grants program. And that's going to be very quick. It'll be done by next Sunday. But there's lots of fun things there if people want to look. It's on our website, but also the schools, the elementary schools get flyers. I mean, we find it's not very helpful to send that out at the middle and high school level. But there will be a Wiffy email going out. And I'm sure you'll all be awake at 5:30 when it hits your clock, because you've got to read it.
Maybe a Wiffy tweet. Yes, okay.
I'd move to accept gratitude and appreciation. The grants from Wiffy totaling $29,890.95.
All in favor. Mr. Nixon?
Aye.
Mr. Hopcraft?
Aye.
Mr. Brady?
Aye.
Ms. Boulonais? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I believe that takes us on to the Lynch.
It does. So.
Okay, thank you. So we are going to hear a project progress update from Mr. Hay. And I am sure Mr. Nixon and Mr. Hackett will be happy to fill in as necessary. The select board and the EFPBC have set the date of January 7th, 2023. It's coming up faster than we think for a Lynch Project debt exclusion override vote. Documents are submitted to the MSBA for the project funding and budget approval, which is still on track for tomorrow.
It is.
Excellent.
Yes.
For the board meeting tomorrow?
Yep.
And additionally, the EFPBC, in collaboration with school committee, will present the project to town meeting, which starts November 10th, for approval of the project funding agreement this fall. We are going to hear an update on the progress and timelines and decision-making as we move towards town meeting and the debt exclusion vote in January. And with that, I would like to welcome Mr. Hay. And Mr. Nixon is with us remotely as well.
Good evening.
Good evening.
It's, it's, I'm not seeing anybody, of course, so it's.
We're all here, Charlie.
Thank you. Thank you for having me remotely, and thank you for allowing me to do it this way. I think, Frank, you were going to show slides, right?
Can you see them?
I cannot see them. But if I can't.
He could share screen.
Yeah. You know what? I, I know, I gave screen sharing to Chris, and I didn't take it back.
Oh, that's what it is.
There it is. Here we go. Got it now?
Do I need to do anything?
Yes. Nope, all set.
All set.
Okay. So, so some of you have seen this, I think, and many of you have seen a lot of these images. So I think I'll go through it very quickly, but we'll probably pause on a couple of the slides that you haven't seen and that seem to be more, more significant or more development more recently. As, as, as you just talked about, the project has formally been submitted to the MSBA. They're going to, the board will vote tomorrow, which is a huge milestone for the project. And at that point, you'll have a PFA with the MSBA, and that allows you to go to town meeting. So, so the project has really proceeded to a really significant milestone moment. And there's not a whole lot going on behind the scenes in terms of project development now, because we're really in a, in a kind of holding pattern. However, we have been working on various aspects of the project, and I'll talk about that. So things are still percolating along. Here's the site. You may have already seen this image, but from the air, we think this is a helpful image just to show parents, neighbors, you know, people like that, because it really gives you some context for, for the site where the new building sits relative to the sort of surrounding neighborhood. We could move slides, Frank, I think. And then, you've seen the site plan before, and the one thing I will add about the site plan is we are, our air and our landscape architect are having a, and, and somebody from my office are having a meeting tonight with Conservation Commission. And it is purely informal, and it is purely informational. We're nowhere close to submitting anything to them. But, but it will, they will begin to talk about the sort of regulatory setbacks along Horn Pond Brook and how we're addressing those, how we're reducing impacts within the Rivers Act setback, as well as the wetland resource area. And we hope that that will be a good productive first conversation. It'll give Conservation Commission the opportunity to really ask questions and understand sort of the approach. So we're looking forward to that. We're looking forward to getting their initial feedback. And hopefully, that will, 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 you know, sort of pave the path for a smoother process when we do formally go before them. But obviously, the project would have to get approved. And, and then we'd have to develop the drawings to a level that we could actually go be, formally submit to them. And that really takes fairly complete civil drawings and landscape drawing. So that's not for a while. That'd probably be late spring or something like that. So, and then the only other thing I would comment on is on the right there, over Horn Brook Road, Horn Brook Road, Horn Brook, Horn Pond Brook is a red dashed line sitting above the roadway that Royal Street comes in. That is a possibility of a future pedestrian bridge. It's always sort of been there as a placeholder. But that's something we've talked about more recently in more detail. And we'll be talking to the Conservation Commission about that too, and sort of find out their views on that. So that's, that's coming up too. Otherwise, I think the site plan remains much like you have seen it previously. The next slide, Frank. Then, this is a slide you also haven't seen, and this is sort of significant to the project. So behind the scenes, there's been a lot of work on sustainability. The, the town has very clearly stated that they have a strong interest in being, in the building being net zero, if, if possible, as a goal. So we are working towards strategies that would get us to a net zero building potentially. And there was a fairly robust discussion around geothermal. It was, in, it was, it was judged that geothermal was probably for this project for a multitude of reasons, not the right approach. However, solar is a real opportunity here to have onsite generation of energy that could get us potentially to net zero or close to net zero. And that would probably be accomplished with both roof-mounted panels. And there's some photographs there, not of our project, but of other sample projects. And some roof canopies, one opportunity, maybe there's a sort of two-story level that I've talked to you all about, that it's sort of outdoor classroom space and green roof space. That could be covered by some kind of a solar canopy. And then, of course, ground-mounted panels, it would be on, they wouldn't be on the ground. They'd be on canopies like that upper right-hand photograph. And so we commissioned a solar study by a well-respected solar consultant called Zapotec, and they are busy completing that study. And they've already presented once to the Sustainability Subcommittee of the Building Committee. And we are coming up with, I think, four different scenarios for, for how to generate enough energy onsite. And, and as the project moves forward, we can further refine that approach. And ultimately, the big decision would come down probably to whether, you know, the project in the town wanted to purchase these panels or whether it was done by a third party as a power purchase agreement. But that also is down the road. But the good news is that the product to be a net zero building. Sorry?
We, I lost you for a second. I'll you back. Can you repeat what you just said?
I think I just said the good news. So, so a lot of decisions will come down the road relative to this solar conversation. The good news is we have no doubt that the building plus the site can support enough solar technology to get us to a net zero project or close to a net zero project. So that's probably would be my closing comment on this slide. So I think you've seen the plans, Frank. I think we can scroll through those. There's really been no changes to those since you saw them last. And then, I think the same probably goes for the kind of the three-dimensional images. They may have been refined a little bit further since what you've seen before. But generally speaking, this is great to show, you know, parents, community members, kind of to imagine what the project might be like. And this is kind of the aerial view, but you get the sense of the site. And then a more sort of ground view, but still a little bit elevated. But, you know, it gives us, and it's early days yet, but you start to get a sense of the scale of the building and how it might be composed. And then we have those same sort of images on the rear from the, from the north side with the, with the fields in the front and the foreground, which is pretty great, because it really does connect the building to the fields, which is pretty nifty. Now, you can keep scrolling.
Mentioned the playground?
I think I've mentioned it in the past, but yeah, there has been, the, the, the idea was generated that, that it might be great to have a small playground on the north side. Much of our playground right now is laid out on the south side, on the other side. But to have one over here so that you have the opportunity, for instance, if you have an older Sib playing soccer and a younger Sib who doesn't play soccer, but the, the parents are there, and, and that younger Sib could be playing in the playground during soccer, or well, it doesn't have to be soccer, whatever the activity was. So I think that's a nice feature of this side. And then, obviously, the north side has a lot of outdoor classroom space, outdoor learning space as well for the, for students. And then, the interior images are probably very much like what you've seen before. I believe I showed you these where we had taken the, 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 an image of the mural. an image of the mural from the Lynch and put it on the wall of the new Lynch inside so that it can really be kept in perpetuity. So that's kind of fun. And these kind of lobby images are very much like ones you've seen previously. The 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 students and the teachers may may have changed slightly, but they're generally the same. It shows you a nice light filled lobby spaces and nice places for kids to perch and to gather. And a real connection visually between the first floor and the second floor. They kind of draws both the public, who if they go want to go to art or media center up and students, obviously. So it helps with wayfinding. And then you're looking back at the main entrance there. And then here you are, having come up the stairs, looking towards the second grade, excuse me, the second floor classroom wing, but with the art art on your right, media center on your right, in the lobby where you just came from below. So that would be a nice sequence for someone who does use a stair or use the elevator, because the elevator is right there on the corner as well. And then I know you've seen this views of the cafeteria. And I think you've seen these kind of corridor views and 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 kind of academic wing views. I mean, the thing we've tried to develop is sort of color themes. And the idea that you could have sort of wayfinding around sort of teams that maybe were associated, in this case, with a fox or an animal or something, but 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 kind of associated graphics on the walls that kind of connect you to a sort of zone of the building. And then, of course, we've always talked about these kind of these sort of breakout learning spaces that 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 take advantage of of these kind of widened classrooms to have kind of another place to teach and to learn. And and then we have them on each floor. Obviously, this is the upper. This is the the this would be the oldest students. Because they have sort of that outdoor classroom space on the left. You can see that same sort of view. And of course, they're also where the 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 Cubbies are for students. And just a classroom image here. And then I think if you keep scrolling, we get to schedule. I don't think I've shared a schedule slide with you before. This is a kind of very conceptual schedule, but it does give a nice kind of overview without getting into the weeds about getting to project completion. So right there in the middle is 2023. Right on the left is 2022. You can see our feasibility and schematic design phase ending in August. And then town meeting, funding vote, and the ballot vote of November 10th, or we don't know if it's November 10th, but starting November 10th and January proceeding to the into early fall of next year, 2020.
So we're having a little bit.
All the way around.
You can't hear me? Now, yeah, I'm so sorry. I don't know what what's going on.
No, that's it's on our end.
I think it is, Frank. I I'm able to see him and hear him fine. So maybe it'll at least come through well on the wind cam rebroadcast when we get there.
Yep.
Well, my apologies anyway. So anyway, we would be doing the documents in late this year through early fall of next year with a bid next fall. And then a construction start either late in 2023 or at the very, very beginning of 2024. And then, as we've talked about, with the goal of having students moving into the Lynch by September of 2025. So that this this kind of in the most conceptual level, it explains that schedule, and you all probably have a more sophisticated understanding of the schedule than people who are coming to this for the first time. But we wanted to make it sort of simple to understand and kind of very basic. So so these are the these are this is kind of the most the most fundamental schedule. And obviously, that green box below shows you students relocated to swing space, which of course is is important to parents and to the community to understand. And that we hope will occur in students would be moving into swing space in September of 2023. But you notice there's a dashed box there, and that's just the possibility of it being pushed back a little bit for if if there's anything out of our control that allows us not to be ready. But the goal is absolutely September of 2023 to be having students at the Parkhurst and then occupying that facility for two years until the new Lynch is ready. So that's kind of the schedule. And Frank, I don't know if there was another slide beyond this.
No, that was it, Charlie.
So that gives you a sense of kind of where we are with the graphic material. So this, and some of you saw it. This was presented at a meeting at Town Hall last week in the morning, and then again at the high school in the in the in the evening. And members of public did come and did have insightful questions and were genuinely interested and engaged. And so this presentation was shared with them. So so that's along with Chris talking through sort of the website and and some of the materials that are on the the Lynch project website. So so that's kind of where we are with sort of the development of the project. But certainly, the the schedule is new and the the kind of this more detailed discussion around sustainability is new. And as I said, we are continuing to have conversations about sort of regulatory issues as well right now. So those are things that continue to percolate in the background. And obviously, the biggest biggest milestone, as we've already mentioned, is the fact that there's a board meeting tomorrow, which is very exciting. And every community that gets to the PFA is pretty pleased. So so I think that's all I have.
All right.
Do you want to open it for questions? Or do you want to talk about swing space, et cetera?
I'll pop Chris on real quick. I know he wanted to just take Chris, you want to go ahead and show your screen?
Sure. So this is where I say, but wait, there's more. So the school committee has seen a lot of these updates at our last meeting. We continue to update the public on upcoming information sessions. As Charlie mentioned, we had one on the 13th, one on the 17th. We do have one scheduled later this week Thursday evening. That's really specifically focused on town meeting members. Always appreciate wind cam. They're going to try to stream that and record it for us. So appreciate that very much. The the couple of the new things that I did want to share with the school committee, and we reviewed costs in quite a bit of detail, as you'll recall, at one of our recent, I think, at our last meeting. So we went over the breakdown of what is the construction cost for the Lynch building itself, other elements that add to construction cost, where we get the project budget, or estimate of the project grant, and then where we get the net. This is what's new, and I hope you all can see this. Okay, if you can't, let me know. I'll try to blow it up. So we have an estimate of the residential tax impact of the project, which is nearly about $55 per $100,000 of assessed value. So there's a breakdown of this. If you scroll down, this is what's new. So for folks in Winchester who are not familiar with the different ways we raise money, on the left, we have a simple description of the bill, say, a distinction between an operating override and a debt exclusion vote. And then on the right, we have a little more information about what's really going to drive this cost. There are a number of things that are, well, we just don't know yet. Some of these some of these things are out of our control. You hear me okay still, Frank?
Yes.
Okay. Number of these things are out of our control, like interest rates, right? Nobody has the crystal ball. But there are some things that are in our control, and that includes things like, are we going to bond for 30 years or 25 or 20? Or is there going to be a short term borrow at the beginning, interest only through a bond anticipation note? So these costs, I want to be clear with the school committee, have been modeled by the town's consultant with some assumptions. This assumes a very modest short term band on anticipation note for the first year of the project. And then the vast majority of of the $77 million being borrowed subsequently in the spring. Like around $73 million. And then much later on in the project, if we should need it, a much smaller borrow around three or three and a half million dollars. So here's what you should think of is it's it's basically one large tranche. The assumption is 5% over 30 years. And this is what's driving an annual tax increase of just under $700 for that average home value of 1.26. Once again, interest rates can can vary. The board will ultimately make this decision after the January vote, not before. And we don't know what January will look like, but this should be helpful to taxpayers, at least as an order of magnitude. So I want to be sure we we visited this tonight. As I think the school committee is aware, Ms. Bergstrom, the Select Board has a policy on evaluating improvements, traffic and safety improvements. Some distance from major school projects when they're driven by enrollment growth. That was a policy the board voted in 2018. This is what drove the reconfiguration of Washington Street and Main Street in front of McCall and the narrowing of Mystic Valley Parkway. So similarly, in this case, the Select Board, as I think most of you know, the Select Board came to town meeting in the spring and got funding to begin the process of evaluating a similar scope of work related to the Lynch project, though not really intrinsic to Lynch and not technically a part of it from the point of view of the MSBA. So we have some more information here that we're sharing about that. You see a simple slide here that kind of shows some of the areas that Tool Design has begun to evaluate. Our acting town manager, Beth Rudolph, had an informational session with the neighborhood. I think Mr. Hopcroft was able to listen in on that last week. So management and the board are getting feedback from the community on this, and a my understanding from Ms. Rudolph is they will be going to T-TAC and eventually the EFPBC and the school committee. So this is just a way to let the community know, although parallel, there's a real interest in in exploring this further. And then with respect to some of the comments Charlie made around sustainability, we've expanded this a little bit. Some of this is familiar to you with respect to project goals, but we're also going to continue to develop some more specific information as we get closer and more concrete, if you will, on how it is we're going to get towards net zero. We don't expect to really be looking at ground mounted solar in much detail until, you know, November, December. Hopefully, the the two the the article regarding the feasibility funding will pass at town meeting. And that'll be important to kind of keep Charlie and his team going. The last comment I might make is very appreciative of Wind Cam and all they do to frankly, support us. They did record the high school presentation last week. It looks great. They're doing some audio work right now to clean things up. But once that's available, we'll put that on the website as well. And perhaps Dr. Hackett can push that out through Parent Square. Feedback we've gotten has been very encouraging. In fact, we we got a comment at Town Hall in our first session. We've already incorporated. There was a parent who wanted to know all the things that are breaking or broken at Lynch. What does that cost today? So we've added that, and it's about 43 million bucks, just in $2022. So I appreciated that feedback very much. The FAQ page is still there, the website, excuse me, the the email account works. Folks can email questions to Lynch2025faq@gmail.com. And we'll be sure to get back to people. The last thing, I keep saying last thing, this really is the last thing. We did have some other exciting news. If Mass DEP can be considered exciting, but we got yesterday afternoon, the official approval from Mass Department of Environmental Protection on the well field abandonment. That turned out to be even more complicated than maybe some of us thought. Turns out they will not approve it until the MWRA evaluates the field and confirms that it is not likely to be a a source of groundwater, much less today, but in the future. So anyway, there was a whole process they had to go through. And we were pleased to get that letter yesterday. So management believes we pretty well wrapped this up. So again, very appreciative of the Select Board and Town Meeting for approving that transfer in the spring. And that's all I had, Dr. Hackett.
Questions?
So thank you, Mr. Hay and Mr. Nixon. This is Tom Hopcroft. Mr. Nixon, that that last comment I thought was really impactful about Lynch today being 42 million dollars just to keep a building that doesn't meet our enrollment program needs. You know, it's really puts sense into context. So thank you for that. And Mr. Hay, just a minor, minor nit on the on the presentation, I love, by the way, I I thought it was a great presentation and love the aerial views. Just as someone who walks down Brantwood, I think the first picture you have of the school site, I think it's just that it just needs to be just a little bit because it looks like you come off of Pond Street into the parking lot. The parking lot is on top of Brantwood Road. And so I think this, just for future presentations, if it's nudged up just a little bit, so you can see that the road will exist beside the the parking lot. Although that makes sense?
Yes.
Okay.
Because there's there's no entrance on the end of the parking lot, right?
Oh, well, there is an ad.
On the Pond Street end of the parking lot?
Along Brantwood Road?
Yeah, the image looks like it. It looks like Brantwood enters right into the parking lot, but I believe it's supposed to go along the side of the park.
This one.
So so there is there is an entrance from so Brantwood goes past the site, but but the same location, the exact same curb cut that currently has the entrance into the service area for 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 the current school will continue to be a curb cut so that there is a roadway that loops around and loops back out again. So there is an there is an access point on Brantwood.
Yeah. So so on the drawing, there's a white line around the south end of the parking lot on the west side of the of the building. And I think that white line is supposed to line up with the north side of Brantwood Road. So it's just suggesting the image just needs to be nudged up a little bit higher, if that makes sense. It looks like there's a road below that white line. It just doesn't connect with where the actual road is.
Right here.
Yeah. So that's that Brantwood coming in right there. And if you look down below, down a little bit, there's where it's. So just slide the picture up so that right now, you're driving right into the parking lot. So just just a minor dent on the on the slide. There's no design change.
Do you see it, Charlie?
I do.
Okay.
I think it's correct on the site plan and just this this the rendering needs to be slightly modified.
Yeah, just sliding the picture over a little bit on that area.
Okay.
Okay.
Thanks.
Frank, I apologize, but I kind of have to.
All set.
Are you?
We knew we knew you had to get out. Thank you, Charlie.
Thank you all. I I apologize for having another commitment, but but I appreciate your time.
Busy night. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Charlie.
Any other questions about the site or the schedule or? Great.
Okay. Thank you. Just have some exciting and anxiety provoking, depending on who you are, news. We are beginning the to relocate central office. We are actually going to be moving the business office out of Parkhurst on Friday, this Friday to the high school. And you can just see the locations that we are looking to to use at the high school for the period of time that we are constructing Lynch and until somebody figures out where we go afterward. The main conference room, when you first come into this, the front entry of the high school, this conference room will service the business office. We'll have a HR admin here, an IT office will be there. And you can see also on the back of the building, C111 will be taking that tech ed space for really everybody else. So all of our other admins. Who will remain here will be the people in this room right now and anyone associated with supporting us. So it's just going to be the business office that's going to be moving on Friday. The reason why we wanted to do it now is because it's just a it's a tough. There are only certain times of the year that you can really, from a business perspective, move that operation. So feeling was this is a good time to do it. We're not getting into budget season quite yet. Payrolls have been figured out. Dust has settled on on FY23. So we'll be we'll be doing that on on Friday. So as of Monday, we will be the business office will be at the high school. The remainder of us is still being worked through, and you know, we're also sensitive to the fact that we do have four sections of preschool here. So I at minimum, I will still. I at minimum, I will still be here for quite some time because I don't want to leave the preschool down there by themselves. But we have kind of a skeleton staff here for the remainder of the year. And then when we probably when we enter. Well, even over the next few weeks, when we come back to you, we'll talk a little bit more about some of thoughts and planning for the rest of us. So. It will be split. As we know, it's not ideal, but we'll have, the business office will be steady at the high school. Reason why we put it there is because. We're not anticipating we would really have an enrollment bump at the high school like we could have at the elementary level. So we only want to move the business office once. So that becomes our new physical address for vendors. Our phone lines will transfer over and it's going to be. It's gonna be good, right, guys? Okay, alright, okay.
New places to visit.
It is, it is. New friends to make. That's right. That's right. Depends on who you ask that question to. High school admin and staff have been gracious enough to take us on. And they've, you know, they've given us spaces they feel that they can give us. And so what we didn't want to do was take any programmatic space for kids. Obviously. So what we what we have here, what we're showing you here is space that is not serving program for kids. I think the conference room at the front of the building might be a little bit painful. But it's it's also important for us to have a front office presence, front door presence. So so that was the thinking behind that. Okay, that's it for that.
And Dr. Hackett, you said that you'd come. Back in a few weeks with additional.
Potentially the next meeting, that's your next meeting. Yeah, yeah.
What about the use of this space? This this can continue?
We can continue here. And Andrew's been working with David at Wind Cam. About the possibility using the lodge group instruction room for a school committee room. Once we vacate this entire space or maybe even sooner, depending on how it goes, I think. Thank David's thing. I think he went to the board, his board either tonight or last night or tomorrow night. This week. Thank you. It's only Tuesday. We we had that conversation today. To request some additional funding, I believe, for some equipment to outfit that space. Yeah.
Recently upgraded the equipment at the select board room above. So.
Which I think would be great to have Wind Cam in that large group construction space for whether we're having. You know, I mean, your meeting is there or not. I think potentially you might be able to do some things with kids during the day through Wind Cam. So hopefully. The high school. Yeah.
That's the the rooms as you enter the high school down the that first hallway to the left. Any other questions about?
I have a couple. So Dr. Hack, first of all, we should have school committee meetings at Dr. Hackett's house. I I have a question about parking and signage. Given the length for which some people are going to be over there. So obviously, we're, the staff are going to need to have places to park over there. But. In terms of public who do have business to transact with the business office. Are are we thinking about putting some signage up somewhere in the lot, Dr. Hackett? So they have a space or? Can we, should we have a conversation maybe with Jay Gill and the police chief about maybe some temporary? You know, designated street parking. I I would just, I'd hate for people who. Who do have some urgent business with the district to find they're stuck because that sometimes during the day, one cannot find a place to park.
Right, right. So we have had some preliminary conversations with town around actually getting some. Some on-street parking and potentially some signage there, but I'm not quite sure whether that's going to go through. It's no question it's going to be a challenge. I think what's going to be important. Is for the for us to really make sure, not unlike COVID, when you, people had to schedule to come in and do business. We may have to take kind of the same approach for the business office at high school as as we did during the pandemic that. You just kind of can't just show up all of a sudden. I think most of the functions. That will be at the high school are controllable for the most part by us, other than vendor deliveries and that kind of thing. But. Generally, business office appointments would be with, you know, HR to fill out paperwork. Or to come in and, you know, a vendor, a vendor. Meetings that are scheduled through us, not necessarily from the outside. I think it's going to be a learning experience, Mr. Nixon. I, you know, I, it's the best we can do right now. And I think we'll kind of live through it a little bit. Which is another good reason to do it now, because we can make some adjustments if we if we find we need to.
And then how, do you have a communications plan ready to go in terms of messaging to the community that you've made this move? So people know where to find you. You know, that includes like, are we changing the address? Our website says forty Sammaset Road. I guess that's going to change Saturday.
Every, everything will change as of Monday if everything goes to plan. So the answer to your first question is yes, we'll communicate it out. We just want to make sure that everything goes to plan. So. And we also have been doing a lot of culling of stuff here at Parkhurst, really trying to get rid of. And surplusing old file cabinets and last year, the project that. Jen and Lori took on to to deal with files that were hundreds of years old. I know, I know.
Well, it's a good thing we cleared out the gym years before that.
Right, right, right. So and we do think we're going to be in good shape when Lynch comes here in terms of furniture. We'll bring whatever new furniture is at Lynch now. But. You know, y'all went crazy buying desks over pandemic like we all did to give the spacing. So. We have a lot of new desks that we don't need now because we're not spacing anymore. We're we're storing those, I believe, in Morocco right now. And we'll be able to. Tap into those as well. So, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Was that all, Mr. Nixon? Sorry, we can't see a hand raised from you.
No, I'm good. I'm good. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Then if there are no more questions, I think we'll move on to the personnel and program updates. And I would invite Mr. Me to. Share that with us.
So I would call this season of hiring new beginnings and opportunities. Opportunities like no other in the past few years. The district as well as just within the Commonwealth. Desi has been very open and flexible to. How they will issue licenses and it really has given people time to reflect on where they are and where they want to go and. In teaching typically, you are a teacher in the classroom or you become an administrator. This kind of flexibility has allowed people to rethink elementary versus secondary. If I'm in a general ed classroom, perhaps I want to go into technology. So we've had a lot of movement within the district and it's only done wonderful things for our students. Because as people are making these moves within the district, bringing with them a wealth of experience and expertise. That's very different to the role. So the conversations around. Most recently, and what's coming to the top of my head, is at the elementary level, a classroom teacher moved into Library Media Specialist School. A very different role, but very much about Lewis and the conversation that she's able to break in. Her practices is really lifting the conversation and making people rethink. And she's certainly taking from. The many Library Media Specialists that have been in this. So it is a win-win. And we've had people that have left the classroom and it's interesting primarily to go into the roles of technology. So what does that allow us to do? Our goal, to see it as a tool, to really embed it into the day-to-day practice. And so we're excited at the possibilities of what that looks like at the elementary. And as we move into the middle school, making it more of that continual and thinking about we have. Staff that have been in the elementary, but now are abridging and they're doing both. So just again, to have that continuity and to have that experience and credibility. Is making a difference in the planning, teaching and assessing. So that that's been really exciting. But on the flip side of that, other districts have been seeing wonderful opportunities. Several staff members and, you know, budgets are what they have been. And this year, the doors have opened. So people that had thought, you know, my twelve years experience at the public schools is going to ground me here. They've had opportunities to go to a district that's right within their hometown or closer to where they live. And they're taking, you know, seeking that opportunity. So again, good news, bad news on all of that. And I I think this is the year also where we kind of have the opportunity to slow it down. Especially at the elementary level, it's really take a look at what our needs are. And thinking about our programs and thinking about the general education, the special education. And how we make that more of a partnership. And how we make sure that our students are in those rich classroom environments the most they can be. So really be flexible in our thinking about, okay, we have these many sections for general education. And we have this need at our special ed and giving staff the opportunity to, you know, think. Is this my chance to try on a special ed role? And in special ed, I very much like to do X, Y and Z. I very much like to work in those pull-up situations. And really thinking about testing and analyzing. So we're taking a look at what our grids are. Our IEPs are telling us and we're taking a look at, okay, what models do we want? First and foremost, all of our students should be in those classrooms. That's our, that's our primary goal. But when they need to be pulled up, we want to make sure that the teachers in the classroom, the students in the classroom, that's what they need. And we want to keep that co-teaching model alive and well. So we're rethinking how we service those students who are on the C grid, that pull-out, that specialized instruction. And who's best able to do that. So it's, it's exciting. It's new. We're exploring. And certainly, we'll be checking in all throughout the year to see how it's going and see how we can improve upon that. So. You know, it's always interesting to think about the reasons for leaving. I've mentioned a few. But really, I think COVID has given people thoughts and really reflecting on what it is they really want to do when they grow up. And we've had more staff this year than any year in the past that are thinking a different career. And so they've left for that or they have left teaching altogether and they're in a formative environment. So those were two big changes that we saw compared to the past few years. And as always, we see a challenge in. Retaining, hiring of those support staff, in particular, the ESPs. So as a district, we're really thinking about what supports resources that we have in place because. In all honesty, this is our most diverse group. Desi is being very flexible in the way that they are thinking about licenses. So we want to capitalize on that and think about how we can give them what they need to take them perhaps. To that next level, get them ready to go into that and become the new teacher in the classroom. And if nothing else, really be mindful of what we're asking them to do each day. And making sure they have the resources and supports they need. And that's PD as far as, as well as just connections. Connections with each other and knowing who the supports are, those people that are there in that corner. To ask any and all questions that they may have. We know we have to do a better job because our research rate is telling us that. And we are, you know. Pulling the troops together to to figure out what that that might look like. And when ESPs are leaving, we are very careful to. Or we're sure to sit down and make sure we understand why, so that we don't keep repeating that same. And I just want to give you all a big shout out. Your support means everything. You allow us. To do all of these things that we know we need to do. And I think about the nurses. And the past few years have been. And hopefully, they'll never have to experience anything like they have in those past three years as we move forward. But you listen. And as a result, this year, we have a floating nurse. And I have to tell you, it's making a huge difference. We actually have subs when people are out. We have someone that's able to go right in, fill in. And the best news is it works very much like our substitute model that we have. We know this person. She knows us. She knows our community and she's starting to know the students. And that's what we want. We want our students to be safe and comfortable wherever they go and to know the resources. So I know I can speak to the nurses when I say thank you for that. That was very much a concern of theirs. And it also allows the nurses to. Collaborate with one another more. So when the floating nurse is not filling in for a nurse. She's able to go and help with all of that input, the data, the recording that needs to be done. The flu clinics that come up, the vision testing. Again, it's just another pair of hands that are needed in those moments. And we're not reaching out to people beyond our community to help build their skills. So thank you for that. And then I just want to. Good news, we will, we, this report that was before you is a little bit older. Our list of vacancies is decreasing badly. So what I can say is Jen and her team is working really hard to get us an administrative and IT and that's well on its way. The CBA's, those related services, the speech and language and the behavior support people. Are harder to fill. So we're posting, we're going out to different avenues and trying to find, you know. The right fit. And we haven't been able to in all cases. So we've worked with the union, which we very much appreciate. And in the moment, because we have IEPs and we have students out there that need this support. So we're using salsons with just a couple. That's very different from the past. We have people that are filling these positions and they're excited. And I will say that the OT group that just. It grew exponentially last year because of me within the district. And they're really kind of working hard together to figure out what their role is and how to best service our students. And as a district, we're figuring out the best way to support this very unique group. So the mentor leaders are really coming together and working with the special ed supervisors, the liaisons, all of us here. To try to figure out what it is that's going to be most helpful for them as they navigate this new year with sixty percent new staff. So I will say like what I always knew, but affirm. We are really a community that is there for each other. We've had many, many of these issues. And the assignments, but there's an opening and there's a need and there's a. A need for support for this new person that's in it. And not once, and I, we've seen it here at Central Office, because there's been a good amount of turnover for us, you're all well aware. People will just jump in, well, lend a hand. What do you need? How can I help? And, you know, when people make mistakes, they are forgetting. Understanding that it's going to happen. And I go on, I mean, I have moments where, huh, does it go so well? But we go back, we reappear and we can have these conversations with one another. So I thank everyone throughout the district for their patience and support as we make these transitions. In the many different roles across the district. And I have to give a big shout out to the hiring teams. Because they were from last February throughout the summer. And just when they thought they had these positions filled, they took a position in another district. So it's been a challenge, but they stuck with it. And we've got some great people that were welcomed here to our community. So we thank everyone for that. And looking out for next steps in the land of HR. We are going to, when I say this, I don't want to jinx myself.
Why are you doing this?
I'm putting it to the universe and it's going to happen. We're going to have electronic buys. It's twenty twenty-two. We bought it inside. It's 2022, we bought it inside. Doing our ongoing, we will, um, we're looking forward to that. And we're, we're so close. Um, staff are being trained, and Marie Altieri, uh, the new HR specialist, is working real, uh, closely with the tech team, and it's going to happen. So we're excited about that. That's it from, uh, the personnel. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Um, yeah. So first of all, thank you for fostering such a culture of support, uh, with the, the, the team. Um, you know, people obviously are the lifeblood of any organization. And, um, it's, it's been certainly a, a challenging environment. Um, so I have just two quick questions. One was, um, how, how things compare, uh, are, are challenges to our pure district or districts outside of, are, are we experiencing the same thing that everyone else is experiencing? And, and is there anything else, you know, we can do to, to be helpful?
Great questions. So yes, we're in very good company, and we're competing for that same group of people. Um, so, uh, yes, we're, we're not alone in this struggle. Um, and again, outside, so hopeful, um, to think just it's October. It feels like on Sundays, it's, it's fun, but it's October. And we have many vacancies in the hardest to fill positions, ISS, lunch staff, and ESPs. And people came together, brainstormed, and again, there were times, it's frustrating. And it's frustrating because they don't have what they need. And people are filling in roles where they shouldn't be because, well, you know, again, something's got to give. So if we're in the lunchroom, we can't be in the classroom. So just coming together and brainstorming makes a difference. So again, I can sit here and say on October 25th that our ESPs, ISS, and lunch staff, we're almost there.
Thank you very much, Lori. I, um, also just wanted to say that I'm excited to hear about the thinking behind building capacity from within, because it's clear that it is a tough market out there, and people are looking to do maybe other things. And so along with building the culture of community here, I love to hear the ideas about thinking about how to bring ESPs up to, to be educators and moving, um, teachers into special education positions that they are, you know, they're certified for, but trying something new and building their own capacity. Because I think when we build our leadership and our strength from within, that helps our retention down the line too. So I love that you're not only thinking about how to fill positions, but how to keep people and how to develop the people we have. So I think those are all three things that are nice to hear. So.
And thank you for your hard work. Because every one of those interview communities you were on, so.
Um, so with that, we will move on to our finance report.
Nice question.
Oh, sorry, Mr. Nixon, you're gonna have to jump in.
No worries, no worries. So, uh, Ms. Kirby, I heard, I, I heard like 90% of your remarks just through the audio. So I know you, you talked a little bit about some flexibility in the context with DESI. So I, and forgive me if I'm going to ask a question you specifically already addressed. Has DESI changed in a meaningful way their provisional licensing, uh, regulations? Are they extending provisional licenses? Are they making it, I don't want to say easier, but different? Are there different pathways to get a provisional license, which, you know, at, at the end of the day, is going to maybe open up the field of candidates for districts?
Wrong the public, you're putting it on the spot. So, yes, they have, uh, done it in a meaningful way. And they're still working, um, to, uh, make it more equitable. Uh, because the, the real barrier here are the M T A's that they're requiring all, um, you know, teachers to take. So there's a lot of scrutiny around that, and there's a lot of pushback from districts, which is a great thing because that's making them examine better what the pathway is and what the different pathways to be. And not just for the schools in urban districts, but for all schools. How can we attract candidates? And how can we make the pathway manageable for anyone that's interested? Um, so I think there's a long way to go with that. The emergency licenses that they, um, have given to, you know, anyone that didn't have a license, truly, I mean, it has mixed reviews, but what it really has done is opened the doors to a more diverse, uh, population. So we just want to stay on that and make sure that these people who are on this license, again, do what they need to, get the support they need to, and understand what pathways there are to get them to that initial, to their, uh, professional license. Can I answer your question?
Sure, got it, thank you.
Is that it, Mr. Nixon?
I'm good.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we will move on then to the finance report. We're going to have the FY '22 summary and a proposed FY '24 budget calendar to discuss. Um, we'll see a summary of expenditures, um, for the FY '22 town meeting approved budget. And this is an annual report that comes every year around this time to the committee. Um, you all received a memo from Mr. Rowe, who has joined us here this evening. Hi, Mr. Rowe.
Hey, thank you very much. I appreciate you, uh, zooming me in. Um, so let me give a brief overview of, um, what we'll talk about here tonight. Um, the memo that you see here accompanies, uh, a report that, um, first of all summarizes the general fund by, um, cost center and expenses by cost center, divided into personnel and then other expenses. And that's an attachment to the document. Um, and then additionally, we've also included a summary of our major revolving funds. Um, and those are, um, funds where we receive revenue for various reasons, specific reasons. Example would be the athletic program, where we partly fund the services we provide through fees that are paid by, uh, families in the community. Um, so that, um, so that this will be a, really a two-part. First, let me focus on the general fund, and then I'll focus on, um, the revolving funds. And, um, you know, please don't hesitate to interrupt me at any point. If you, um, need clarification or have any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer them.
Thank you.
Um, so in general, uh, we ended the year, uh, so this is a report on FY '22, which is the year that ended, uh, on June 30th. Uh, the fiscal year that runs from July 1st to the end of June. So this is a report on last year. Um, year closed. Um, we had a budget of $58.1 million, uh, and we spent $58.1 million. We, um, what we're saying in the report here is that we really have an unexpendated balance of $4,836. Um, and, uh, as you know, we had, uh, conversations early in the year when we were concerned that some of the high spending that we were seeing in our, um, tuition out students or special education tuition students, uh, was really going to challenge us budgetarily, as, as it did. Um, but the big picture, um, story from last year is that, um, due to some of the struggles that we had in terms of filling our positions, really, um, tying into the conversation that, that Lori just went through in terms of some of the challenges that we faced in terms of ESP positions or, or other positions. One thing we experienced last year was, uh, due to vacancy accruals and due to some, um, lags in hiring that happened, um, and/or just reassignment of folks. Um, where let's say of someone who's working with us as an ESP or an ISS, uh, those are, are classroom and other support positions, would move temporarily to a teaching position, um, to, uh, fill in for a period of time. Um, what we did was we had some, uh, vacancy accruals that helped us to fund the overages that we were seeing on our expense side. So that's sort of the big picture summary to what happened last year. We are an organization that last year we had budgeted 361.2, uh, full-time equivalent positions. Um, and the accompanying document, uh, that goes with this memo, um, lists our 12 cost centers, uh, which are primarily our school locations, what we call our central budget, uh, and then our special education, uh, department, our pupil services, our technology, um, as well as a high school, McCall, and the, the five elementary schools. So that you can see by cost center, um, you can see the staffing levels, both the projection, both what was budgeted, um, as well as, um, what we ended up with in terms of actual positions last year. Um, and we, we report them because at one time or another, virtually all of them were filled. Uh, but there were certainly some in and outs that happened in the course of the year. So you can, you can see the FTEs compared to budget and the actuals that we, um, ended up with as we began the year. And then the report by each of the expense, um, accounts, whether it be teacher or administrator or support position or specialist, if it's in special education or in pupil services or technology, then lists the, um, actual dollars we expended in a, in a particular category, uh, against the budget. And you'll see in many cases, there are variances. Um, and, um, that has an awful lot to do with the timing of the budget. Uh, as you know, one of the things we'll talk about after this particular conversation about the FY '22 budget is look briefly at the FY '24 calendar. Um, so we're really skipping a whole year as we begin to look ahead to next year. Um, and by sometime in January, we'll set a budget for that. Um, and the same thing happened, really, the budget that you'll be, that you're looking at uh, here, that, that was the plan for last school year, was really set, uh, six months prior, uh, back in early, uh, 2020, 2020, uh, excuse me, 2021. Um, and so there are variances that happen, and some of them are driven by enrollment changes that may happen at a particular school. Some of them may be driven by, uh, program decisions that intervened. Obviously, uh, '22 was an attempt to have, um, a more normal year, but, but part of the timing of the development of the budget was in, uh, during FY, um, '21, when, um, obviously COVID was affecting, um, significantly what, what had been happening. So the, um, the budget, um, of, of $58.1 million, um, the actual expenditures were, were, uh, slightly under that for $4,800. Um, the, the, a breakout of our budget is, uh, we had, we expended $49.3 million for personnel and, uh, $8.7 million for other expenses. Um, and the, um, the main challenge for last year was really maintaining our staffing levels. As Lori pointed out earlier, in terms of the challenge that we're seeing at the beginning of this year is really a pattern, um, that we faced last year as well. So in specialists and in education support positions, um, and then some of our substitute positions. And then the major challenges on the expense side, uh, was in special tuition and professional service budgets. Um, and so that, um, in summary, the, um, the salary savings and, and some of the accruals helped us to address and cover some of the, uh, overage that we, um, saw in special education, uh, private tuitions. We also, in the course of the year, had some, um, other unplanned for events that we were able to cover in the budget. Um, you may recall, there was an overage for the Parkhurst elevator installation that we were asked to, um, cover in our operating budget, uh, which we did. Uh, there was also a settlement, uh, as you know, um, that you led in for the OT PT, uh, group, uh, in a contract settlement, uh, and we accommodated the cost of that. And then we also, um, covered a, a closeout cost that happened for the Edco Collaborative that Winchester had actually left a number of years ago, but for which we still have liability as that organization closed up. Uh, so we were able to cover, um, those costs in the general fund, um, as well as the, um, the major pressures that happened in the course of the year, um, and, uh, come in on budget. So that's a quick summary of the general fund. And before I go on to revolving, um, if anyone has any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer them.
Mr. Nixon, I'm going to start with you so we don't miss you. Do you have any questions?
Uh, none on this, I don't appreciate it.
Okay. Rest of the committee.
Okay?
Yeah, so, um, Mr. Rowe, this is Tom Hopprock.
Yes, hi, Tom.
So congratulations. Uh, it's wonderful when the actuals, uh, you know, come in on target or, or just about, um, on target to be in the budget numbers. Um, of, of course, um, media through, um, your vacancies isn't, but that's the way the world do that. And, and I'm, I guess I'm wondering if, how things look in terms of, you know, we have structural deficit if we fill, if we keep all these roles filled, does that make it better on the personnel side? Uh, are the out-of-district replacements going to be a problem for the year ahead?
For, for the year ahead, um, hope, for, for the current year, yeah.
About a year.
Partly, you know, I, preliminarily, um, we're in much better shape beginning this year than we were a year ago. Um, and a lot of that has to do with, first of all, decisions that you made, um, in the preparation approval of the current year budget FY '23, in putting some significant increase into special education tuition. So that's certainly helped us. We went from, uh, the budget last year was 2.1, and we added, I think it was 500,000. So we're about 2.6 million in terms of the general fund. Um, that's really, and this is one of the points I was going to cover in the revolving funds, but let me get to it now. Um, when we, when we talk about, uh, special tuitions, it's really like a three-legged stool. Um, we fund significantly from the general fund, and that we increased that by, uh, $500,000 for FY '23. We also, um, utilize circuit breaker funds for that. And the circuit breaker funding, that state funding that we get, uh, to partly offset the cost of high-cost students. The circuit breaker funding for FY '23 increased to a million, a little over a million three. Uh, where a year ago, it was a little over, it was about mid 900,000. Uh, so from 950, let's say, to, uh, I think it's a million 33. So, um, that's a, um, almost $400,000 increase. Um, so those two together really have gotten us up so that the funding that, oh, and then the third, uh, third leg of the stool is our IDEA grant, um, Individual Disabilities Act grant that we get from the federal government. And, uh, that grant again is in the mid 900,000s. Uh, we actually have, uh, just over 800,000 available to spend toward tuition. So when you add that to the, of the 3.9 million, we're in the 4.7 million dollar range in terms of funding that we've planned for special education tuitions this year. Excuse me. Um, the final total spending number for last year was, um, a little over that, about 4.8 million. Uh, but that was significantly over what was budgeted. So the answer is, um, coming out of the gate, we're much better positioned this year. Um, you know, I'm in the process of having conversations with, um, Heather Gary, our new special education, um, director and her office in terms of us, um, getting a real handle on, um, the projection for students that we'll probably be talking with you about at the next meeting. So w- we think it's, uh, much more in that range. Um, so I think we're much better positioned this year to deal with that as we begin the year.
Thank you. It's great.
Um, Mr. Rowe, thank you very much for this. You might be coming up to this shortly, but I was curious about the early childhood program and the difference in revenue there. Could you just, uh, tell us a little more about that?
Sure, uh, let me grab my, let me grab my numbers. Right, it's a, in, in broad strokes, um, the early childhood program, um, is funded primarily out of the general fund. Uh, and the staff are within our special education cost center. But, but additionally, we charge for typically, typically, families of typically developing kids, uh, we charge a tuition. And the, um, tuition for last year, I think, was, was it 390,000? Yeah, we brought in, um, 330,000. We expended 356,000. So let me start with that fund. So we ended last year with $81,000 fund balance. We had begun last year with about $100,000 fund balance. So, um, so we charge for this, for the typically developing So, um, so we charge for this, for the typically developing kids. We don't charge for the special education student. Um, and uh, the staffing is shared partly through the funding that we bring in. For the fees we charge, uh, but probably twice that amount, six to seven hundred thousand. Is actually embedded in the general fund in the special education cost center.
So, sorry, were all the seats filled at the program this past year or?
Were the seats filled?
Yes.
Um, my understanding is, is yes, I don't have them in front of me right now. But um, I remember a conversation that we had with the finance committee near the end of last year where we're just talking about the structure of it. Um, and um, certainly, my understanding was all the. Fee-paying seats that we had available had been filled. Remember, we, we have a half day and a full day mix of programs. Um, and um, I think one of the, one of the issues that faces the administrators, making sure that they have the right mix of kid, of, of students. Uh, when we receive, for instance, a special education student who, who gets diagnosed, then the IEP requires us to serve that student. You know, we always have to make sure that we have a seat for those students and that partly drives the um. Uh, tuition-based students that we can bring in. But my understanding was our seats were full last year.
Okay, thank you.
I think you can continue on then, Mr. Rose.
Yeah, okay, let me move on. Yeah, the um, so I just want to talk about four other revolving funds. The major ones we have, our largest is actually our school food service program. Um, annually, we spend somewhere in the neighborhood of a million five in terms of the cost of that program. Um, last year, we actually brought in revenue that exceeded a million six. Um, and we have a um, healthy fund balance right now, um, of, that exceeds eight hundred thousand dollars. We um, we're allowed to have a fund balance and we need to have that. But we do um, have to um, continuously look to make sure that we're targeting. Uh, and balancing the, the fees we charge against the, the cost of the program and the money has to stay. Uh, within the organization uh, to serve the program and, and um, that can be used to. Uh, improve um, the um.
Peter, we're losing you a little bit.
That we use. It says, yeah.
Five seconds, sorry.
Okay, I'm back.
Hi.
Um, the um, so the, so the food service program is um, was, was a um, revenue generator last year. Uh, the other piece of information is that uh, this uh, FY twenty-three. Will be a second year. Last year, uh, we were, it was a fully reimbursable program. Uh, the federal government was underwriting, federal and state government were underwriting the entire program last year, and that's continuing this year. So. That's been good news for families. Um, so we expect that that program will, will um, continue uh, financially in, in good position. Um, our athletic program. Um, spent um, just about uh, one million, or the budget, the uh, budget is a million five, a million. And fifty-four thousand. Uh, last year, we expended a million and seventy-three thousand. Um, part of that was a one-time uh, investment in um. Improving the guy wires and other supports for the basketball um. Court at the high school where there were some issues going on. So we put aside some of the one-time money we had. We ended the year with a two hundred and seventy-two thousand dollar fund balance. And we had begun the year with a number slightly higher than that. Uh, and generally. Um, that's the kind of situation that we would like to be in, to make sure that we always have something we can fall back on. So on a going-forward basis. Uh, we, we um, like to have a fund balance we can work with. And remember that the athletic budget, that million and fifty-four thousand. Is funded um, a little more than half from the general fund, uh, five hundred forty-seven thousand dollar appropriation. And then the remaining by um, charges to the families for the athletes to participate in the program. So it's about a fifty-fifty split in terms of commitment from the general fund and commitment by participant. Um, and then two other uh, programs we have. One is uh, school transportation. And again, it's a model similar to athletics, um, where the um. The general fund commits four hundred and thirteen thousand dollars. And we're anticipating three hundred ninety thousand dollars uh, as fees. For um, uh, from our bus riders, uh, and these are students who. Uh, fall below the mile and a half requirement that we would um, give them free transportation, but we're fairly select to. Um, to get transportation for more convenience, um, or safety reasons. Um, and, and so they pay, uh, so we expect to get three hundred, three hundred ninety thousand dollars. Um, in the current year, the, for last year, the revenue was three hundred eighty-one thousand. Um, and the total expenditures from the general fund were a little under what we had budgeted. There were two hundred ninety-five thousand. Uh, partly because we were actually operating down a bus for much of last year. Because of the difficulty in finding um, drivers. Um, so our, our contractor. Um, really faced the same issues that our food service vendor faces that. Well, Lori documented earlier that, that we face in terms of um, filling, you know, all of our positions um, continuously. Um, and then um, the building rental account, we uh, we rent out space. Uh, to um, sometimes private services. Uh, sometimes to the, to the community, uh, generally define a community use. Um, as um, an activity, if it's a civic organization or a, or a locally sponsored or a parent organization, we don't charge a fee. But we do, we do charge for um, private and many nonprofits who may want to use our space. Um, and last year, we brought in a total of a hundred and sixteen thousand dollars in revenue. We expended about a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars in revenue, primarily on the cost of cleaning those spaces. A lot of the usage is. Evening and weekends. Uh, and so a lot of the cost of that is opening the buildings, maintaining the buildings and, and we give ten percent of that. Um, to the um. I forget the name of the uh, town committee that um. Uh, does energy management, but uh, we pledged uh, ten percent of that money to them. Um, and that account at the end of last year had a hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollar fund balance, so. Um, so those are really the major funds. We have a couple of others. We have a music fund where we charge some fees for, we have uh, community education. Uh, that primarily is used for uh, funds for SAT and AP exams that, that come through the high school. Um, but those are the, the major funds. Um, that we have in the books. All of these accounts are on the books with the um, town controller. Uh, and, and we handle our, our procurement and our expenditures and our staffing. For revolving funds identical to how we'd handle it for the general fund, so. In terms of um, accounting and control, uh, everything is really under the same rubric. Um, and managed the same way. So I'm glad to take any more questions on that, too.
None here in the room, Mr. Nixon? I would say we're good.
Well, my, my only question actually is more directed towards FY twenty-three and I, I think Peter maybe alluded to this in an upcoming meeting, but. We are, our standard, excuse me, our standard practice is to. Vote a recommended realigned budget in the fall. Sometimes that's end of October, early November. Um, and I realize, given Ms. Kirby's presentation, a lot of balls in the air, but is that still something we can anticipate, Peter?
Yes, I, I was anticipating that we, for the next meeting, depending on how you set your agenda. I mean, we'll be ready at the next meeting to talk. Um, I, you know, I think pretty deeply about where we see, where we are. And then we can have the conversation, do we want to vote that number at that point? Maybe we want to wait another couple of weeks, but you're right, we're in that window now. Where generally our pattern is set for the year, um, as long as we have all the data in front of us. And you're right, there, there are a number of moving pieces. Um, and, and we'll see where we are.
And, and to that point, you know, and because our budget really is virtually entirely fungible, um, the dollars anyway, um. Uh, some years ago, maybe, maybe four-ish years ago, some, I mean, Ms. Bergstrom, Ms. Bullen essay will remember this, that. Our, our, our practice changed a little bit and we fell into a period where maybe not. Every month, but it felt like at times every six weeks, we were voting an amended budget for the current fiscal year. Um, I never totally understood the value of that. Um, you know, your time is valuable, your predecessor's time is valuable. And just for my purposes, I just want to reiterate. When, when we do our best work, when you do your best work in the fall, you make a recommendation and we vote a revised budget. It, it's valuable for us to see during the year if we are overspending or underspending certain lines, because to me, that's a tell. Uh, for our budget planning for the coming year. Um, and so I just, I want to say that once again, because un, unless it's absolutely necessary for us to. Continue to tweak and revise budgets, you know, for the current fiscal year. It seems to me there are. Um, more meaningful places where Peter Rowe can spend his time, but I, I'm just one member of the committee. Uh, but we did it that way for years and I thought it worked really well. That is to say, we vote a revised budget in the fall and that's what we got with.
Yeah, and, and I actually would advocate for that as well. And I think your, your point about it being a tell. It, it gives a, it gives us a good sense of, um, you know, where we thought we, where, where we put a stake in the ground. Once we see the patterns for the year, enrollment, hiring, um, you know, outplacements, all those kinds of things. We, we look at that and say, okay, here's where we think we are, because we have to begin to plan. The, as you see the calendar in front of you, the twenty-four budget really based on that data. Um, and then we get a sense as we go through the year, um, you know, how close our planning was, uh, close our actual was to our planning.
Thank you.
And I think any of those more detailed conversations, Mr. Nixon, may happen at the finance committee level as well, now that we have an operating finance committee again. Also. Any other questions? Okay, Mr. Rose, would you like to take us through the FY twenty-four budget calendar?
Or, so um, this is really um, a set of steps that I, I think you've all been through. Um, and, and you know it well, um, but um, we'll. Uh, over the next couple of months, we'll really get deeply into the discussion around next year's calendar. And I think. Mr. Nixon um, kicked it off appropriately by um, saying that really by end of October, early November. Uh, we need to be talking about the current year budget and understanding its components and where the pressures are. Because that'll lead to um, a determination of really where we begin to go uh, after that, so that um. We'll have initial discussions uh, with the principals and directors during that period of time in terms of setting the, the uh. The goals for next year. The principals work with their school coun, uh, councils in December. Um, thinking about uh, budget requests that they may have or changes. And that then really does lead to the, the, the final set of goals that, that uh, will, will come from the superintendent. Um, in, by the end of December. Um, so uh, the um. Request, we, we've set the date of December ninth right now for where we would expect to receive. Um, submissions to central office. Um, then we'll have a, an internal review of that. We've said tentatively December sixteenth. Um, the superintendent then has to um. Really get feedback. We'll have conversations with the community, we'll have conversations with the subcommittee, the, the, we haven't listed here specifically the. School Committee's Finance Subcommittee, but during this period of time, we'll be having a back and forth to report to you how we're doing. Uh, what we're hearing. Um, we are targeting January tenth for an initial presentation of what would be preliminary information to the committee. Um, and then there's, there'll be a period. Uh, through the eighteenth, really ending up at least tentatively set for January twenty-fourth. For um, you to have a public hearing. Uh, we'll um, hopefully be able to get um, good information out to the public before that. Uh, but that's certainly an opportunity for there to be public discussion at a formal school committee meeting. Uh, and so we're targeting January thirty-first for the uh, vote on the budget. And then, as you know, um. We then go through a long period of time where we have to get ready for town meeting. We meet with the finance committee through the. Through the February, March period. Um, and then that leads to the um, annual town meeting, which is the final approval for our budget. Uh, which will, we assume now be, may, be in May. Um, the good news for last year is that the budget that you voted. Uh, became uh, the document and the, the budget that was voted by town meeting and that was very good, so. Uh, but you know, every year is different and we'll see what the pressures are. Uh, but that's, that's, that um, calendar and sequence is what will follow as we prepare for twenty-four.
Thank you. Questions on this?
Just one very detailed comment now, I'm chair. So, you know, we did this two or three times remotely, thanks to COVID and our virtual. Permissions through the Attorney General's Office, but when we meet in person, we usually pick a. Snow date for that public hearing, which we have to have. So uh, there've been a couple of times where. Uh, school was out of session due to winter weather, so we had to cancel that. So. That's just something to look at and maybe just coordinate with Dr. Hackett. So we put that out there as backup.
Yep. We can do that. And um, if there are no other questions, we'll move on. I think um, just a quick discussion of town meeting articles. Mr. Nixon, you wanted to call people's attention to a change in the numbering of the town meeting articles.
Um, well, not, not so much, well, just so that nobody was confused about it, certainly let people know, but um, i, if I. If Dr. Hackett would let me share, um, that what, what's new is actually, you know, a, a body of work. So there are two articles that are, and I've, I've, I've seen the warrant that just went to the printer today, so Articles twelve and thirteen. Hopefully you can see this. These are in fact shown cosponsored by the school committee in the EFPBC. So the uh, the article seeking sort of a broadening of scope for the feasibility funds um, had been Article thirteen. It is now officially Article twelve. We've already, as you know, we've discussed the article and the motion, what is new. Um, and Dr. Hackett shared this with us in our packet, um, I guess yesterday. Um, what came today was just the renumbering. So this is an explanation to town meeting. Uh, about what this article is about and why we seek it. So it should be very straightforward to the school committee. And it clarifies that we've spent just over nine hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars. And we're looking to basically tap five, five hundred and twenty-two so that Charlie and his team can continue on the work that we heard about tonight. And then the next article, uh, which is really the main event, that's the Lynch Project Funding Authorization. It's now Article thirteen. But once again, this, this particularly for our newer town meeting members. Uh, offers some explanation of our history with the MSBA, the facilities grants we've received in the past. Uh, and what we expect uh, at Lynch, very brief description of the size of the project, the number of classrooms. Um, and as well as a, a brief sort of summary of what exists today and why the project is necessary. So. Just wanted to be sure everybody saw that. That's um, what will go out and get printed and shown as um, cosponsored.
Excellent. Thank you for sharing that with us. And I also wanted to share with town meeting members per, I mean, but school committee members per usual. Um, school committee will be doing a, the fall presentation, which is really an intricate school year and our goals and. Um, the expectation setting around uh, what will be coming forward. Uh, a brief overview, because the EFPBC will cover the details of Lynch, but a brief overview of our building projects and where we're moving in the district for the coming. Year. Um, if anybody has any input or feedback for that, um, please feel free to get in touch with me. And just let me know if there's anything important you think needs to be included in that presentation that I'll be preparing for the meeting. And Dr. Hackett will um, be afforded some time to speak to the community during that presentation as well. And that's all I have for town meeting articles. If anybody has anything else, I will move on to our goals.
Okay, thank you. Um, in, kind of also in the interest of time, knowing we do have an executive session as well, but. Um, we, as you know, we have been um, working on. The framework for a strategic plan for the district, a more of a three-to-five-year planning process. Um, and last year I had developed four goals and what I. And last year I had developed four goals, and when I talked about those goals, I talked about those goals as being multi-year goals, so. From my goal standpoint, you're not going to see a change in my actual goals. What we really needed to do especially was to really nail down and develop. District goals for this year, for all of our teachers and all administrators, in in terms of the work we're doing, we know what the priorities are. They're not, you're going to see that they're not tremendously different, but the wording is a little bit different, and there's some additional components to it. That will take you through, so, but before we go there. Tonight, what I really want, what we'll do is we'll talk about the strategic planning process that the school committee's been going through. With a couple of workshops, I'll show you the district goals that we're proposing for this year, and then I will show you. The superintendent goals, and the picture up on the right-hand side is from Jay Gill, has a drone apparently that I've been trying to get a hold of, so. So I would turn it over to. Well, just like I'll comment, we did have leadership team, it's about forty of our administrators, as principals, assistant principals, directors, coordinators, central office staff. We had two workshop days in August prior to the school committee workshop. We spent mainly the the seventeenth, a good portion of the seventeenth, we focused on. The values as they were articulated by a mission and value document that's in your policy from several years ago. I I think I thought it was a great day, I thought the team did a really good job, just going through and saying, what are these values, what do they mean to us now? Are they clear? And there was good discussion around that, which we will continue to keep alive as we move forward, and then kind of. Simultaneously, the committee, as you know, all of you, have had a couple of workshops, and I don't know whether or not. Madam Chair, you want to speak to that or Mr. Hopcraft or?
So, the school committee then also had a similar, but not not exactly the same, but a similar experience where. We first set some norms around our work together and. How we would be able to accomplish the goals that that we would be setting for the coming year. And then we dove pretty deep into some goals envisioning for this committee and. The and for what we see as important as educators, as. Community members, as parents, as school committee members. Really that we define as some guiding principles, which are still under development, as we say here. But there were six big themes that came across when we started diving deeply into that with each other, which was supporting ideas around student success. That we value family support, we value diversity, equity, belonging and inclusion, we value innovation. We value sustainability, being a sustainable district, so sustainability, and we value our ability to engage. With in a civic way with the community. These were some obviously big words, and we're still working together, we have a a couple more workshops probably to go. To sort of define how we really see these working in the district and how. They would drive a strategic planning process for the district the next three to five years. So, we will continue our progress towards these goals and the multi-year strategic plan throughout the twenty twenty-two twenties.
Yeah, I'll say, it's very well said. I I think it is stressing that. You know, the the committee came together, Dr. Hackett, and it's, you know, work in progress, but I think. They're very good directional goals that we need to. That we need to further.
Okay, so what we're looking at for our district goals, and I'm going to ask Jen and Lori to please jump in where you. Where where you see fit, or and if you don't, I'll just tell you to jump in, because I know you don't like to do this. The first district goal is to continue creating and implementing a wider range of authentic, relevant assessments that meet diverse learning needs, and. This is is associated with and attached to one of my four goals, we we were talking about really trying to. Take, we're doing great work around performance-based assessments. We know we have other sources of data, whether it's formal assessments, informal assessments, and if you recall back in the spring. We had several workshops with staff coming in and really sharing that those different levels of assessment we have. Big question for us, and I think the big task, and I I would love to. I I love this task, this has been my my holy grail my entire career, I like to think we can get it done before, you know, I. Pass out in the office. Is to be able to take multiple assessments that measure standards. And bring them together and look at how how, what are the data telling us? About student performance or student achievement or student attainment of our standards that we that we base everything on. From one assessment to another assessment to another assessment, I don't dislike the word triangulation, but I. The idea that we're looking at multiple assessments on one standard, so we have, it's not just the MCAS score. It's not just one particular performance-based assessment, it it could be a variety of assessments and. That work has been kind of happening and 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 ongoing. And we've, we are in a place now, we've really started, I think, to bring together a team to be able to start to do it, part of this is a technology. Challenge, and we'll show you hopefully in several weeks, maybe in early January, some progress that we've made. On dash, on some dashboard software, that we'll be able to roll a lot of this data up into, and because the goal obviously is getting. Getting this information in the hands of parents and teachers and students in a way that makes sense for them. You know, you can have all kinds of data, but if you don't do anything with it and you're not able to make it talk to each other. It doesn't necessarily mean as much, so, and I'm also seeing that I might be running out of battery, so. That, that is goal number one with that focus. And it really also the focus on 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 student voice and choice, I I think that, you know, that that this, we've done a great, great job prior, my arrival certainly. Before my arrival, and I think the work continues on making sure that we are really listening to kids, giving them choices. So they can take the pathways that match their their diverse learning styles. Goal two, to create school and classroom cultures that support student learning and development through the systemic integration of social emotional learning practices. This, as you know, has really is an ongoing goal, we have had this goal in place. We have changed the wording a little bit on here, and and these bullet points under here are just kind of a little bit more of a descriptor. We know we have a social emotional learning. Initiative in in Massachusetts Public Schools, that is a link to the Dusty website that that talks about that. One of the things that you would see on that website is it does mention the the castle standards. We have the Massachusetts Social Studies Frameworks is part of the work around this. And part of what we look to for standards and how we think about this work. And then, you know, really the goal is, one of the goals obviously is is making sure that. That everyone has a sense of belonging, that that students are connected to teachers, they're connected to to each other, and you know, the the, to steal the Lynch phrase. They say, we all belong here, but you know, that we all belong, and that's critical, we know as we've come out of the pandemic that. There's never been a more important time, probably in and around the need for strong social emotional. Learning program, and what we're trying to do here is to really integrate, and I think we are doing it. Integrating within our academic, again, content areas. We've, we have reached your, you reached your goal, congratulations to the school committee for now having a a an SCL coach in every single law entry school. That was, you had targeted that as a goal, I think several years ago, actually, so we are there now. And we've got some great hires and and we will also make sure that we get our new. SCL director in front of you, I, we're super impressed with the work that she's doing already, so. And then goal number three, to support classroom. I'm sorry, to support school and classroom cultures that promote inclusive and equitable student learning and development. We're pulling in and we've done work, as you know, around social justice standards. We're looking at Massachusetts Cultureally Responsive Teaching and Leading, that's a document on Dust's website that talks about. The importance of making sure that, kind of going back to that we all belong, and that we. Give continued work around also around our special education programs, I know that, as you know, we have the ICCD report. As we have gone through that internally, as we look at. The recommendations out of our report, and we'll be bringing some information to you and some potentially some budget requests to you, even in the current fiscal year. Because we've been really smart about our S R funding, everyone went up, a lot of people went out and blew it last year, we've really held on to it. We spent all of S R one. We have a hundred and thirty thousand dollars dedicated to the McCall HVAC project, as you know. And we've had some other expenditures in and around just supporting masks and those kinds of things out of two and three, but we have substantially. Intact with the rest of funding, and we knew that coming out of this pandemic was not going to be a one-year. Rebound, and this is going to be a multi-year project, so S R two and three. We have to have spent two by the fall of twenty-three and three by the fall of twenty-four, so we do have a really nice window. And runway to, now that we know where our kids are at, going through last year, coming into this year, working on our assessments. That we really, I think, could really put together even more support services for our students. One of which is we really, we believe, and it came out of the ICCD report, but I think across the board. It's a really good time for us to look at our our in-district special education programs, K to twelve, pre-pre-K to twelve. You know, to really get clear about things like our entry and exit criteria for the programs. Communication, a program descriptions, and then also really making sure that we're providing and refining that professional development. That I think this district does incredibly well. Targeted to both general ed classroom teachers to support students who are in those programs and full inclusion. But also for this, for teachers and staff, ESPs, who are working day-to-day with students who are in those in-district programs, who. Many of whom have have some pretty pretty heavy duty needs. Also, I think it's just a a chance for us to really recommit to the co-teaching model, that was something that this district. Put in place many years ago, a lot of things happened when we hit COVID and we went hybrid and we were remote. And, you know, we all survived and we were trying to get through. Last year, we really started to see a really good recovery, but you you heard Mr. Rowe talking tonight about some of the budget challenges. Related to staffing and personnel and trying to hire. This year, I just feel like we're much more stable, and I think, you know, we really want to get back to those good practices of co-teaching. Which really can make sure that we're keeping our kids in in the classrooms where they where they belong. So, that's really kind of a nutshell, Jen or Lori, feel free. Thank you, thank you. Cheers to you. And then these should look familiar to you. These are the goals that I put in front of you for last year, that I worked on last year, they are still relevant. One and two still have to do with the strategic planning process that we're going through this year. I, you know, my hope would be that by plugging backwards from June of twenty-three. We will have had a chance to really put together a comprehensive or strong three to five-year strategic planning pro- plan. That also, in in that process, also gives us a chance to talk to community members and bring community into that planning process, so. That really is almost exclusively related to goals one and two. And we've made good progress on that, as we we talked about tonight. And then go three and four, you can see some connection there to the district-wide goal number one. And certainly, one and three around programmatic review. And trying to make sure that we are thoughtful in how we do our programs, we we stay continuously. In a cycle of of review and refinement and improvement. And I, you know, we've made good progress, and I I think this year will be, we'll be able to accelerate that progress, so. That is what I have for you this evening, and. See how much, I I am got a little green, if I I, if I lose you, I've got seventeen percent battery remaining.
Questions from the committee? Mr. Nixon, I'm going to call you out just because we can't see you.
Oh, I'm good, I'm good.
And certainly, these aren't something we are going to vote on this evening, this is just the introduction to. Goals, to Dr. Hackett's goals and the district goals, and certainly our own work is ongoing. So, I'm happy to hear any feedback or questions that can help move any of this work forward. Otherwise, if people just want to sit with this a little bit as well, I think it's a good opportunity to to think about. What's been presented here this evening, and we can certainly have it on a net jet in the future too. Thoughts, Mr. Brady?
Just thinking in light of the name scores that came out recently.
Can you define NATE for everyone?
Sure. Is a exam that the Federal Department of Education administers every year to fourth and eighth graders. And it tracks progress, some people would call it the gold standard, it's certainly a useful tool. Massachusetts generally does quite well, but just looking at these scores. It just kind of shows that across the country, there definitely is room for improvement, so. I just like us to think about in our goals. Starting to get a little more specific in some of these areas, we have a lot of great data, I appreciate that we have. A variety of assessments, and so I think just kind of, I would ask that, you know, the leadership team look at kind of across the district. The results from all those assessments and. Help lead our staff in where to go next, I think there's. There's a lot of great opportunities, but I think it's just helpful to have a focus. On where perhaps the greatest need is right now going forward, because again, I think last year. Was a great year in the in the sense of getting back to. Business and and how we do things, and so now I think we have some, a lot of great data, and so now it's kind of like, where do we go from here? So I think just providing a little more direction around that would probably be helpful.
Helpful and and completely agree, and I think we're going to meet in a better place to do that this year, I feel better about. Just for example, you know, MCAS results from last year. In terms of just that being a more solid year for students to sit and take that test. And not surprisingly, and not like unlike what we're seeing nationwide. We know, we knew going into the pandemic, we knew while we were in the pandemic, that our most vulnerable learners were going to be the ones that were going to struggle the most, and. Our ability or inability to provide special education services, I remember the beginning of this when I was not here, but. Just couldn't even provide OTPT, we couldn't provide speech and language because we couldn't have access to the kids. And, you know, like I said earlier, it's it's, it's not going to be a one-year recovery, I mean, this is going to be a multi-year recovery. And the data is 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 really important for us to to get there. I'm excited about some of the the curriculum initiatives that we're hearing tonight, I'm excited about getting back to co-teaching, I'm excited about focusing on. Really trying to improve our special education district-wide programming. And and how we think about those programs, and and you heard Lori speaking tonight about, just even going through the summer, we were able to really. Leverage some turnover in staff to reallocate resources, of Jen. And Pam spent a ton of time in the spring, I don't know, hours and hours, with every single principal going through. Every single kid, going through every single grid, going through every single services, and. Came to the conclusion, we were going to be, we we needed more sped teacher support. So, as the summer progressed. You know, we were able to take advantage of some of of some vacancies and for, you know, taking a general education vacancy. Realizing that we could repurpose that into a special education teacher position and kept staff, re-energized certain staff, brought in new staff. So I think, you know, we're, we're in a good place for for that work, so I appreciate your comments, Mr. Brady, and, you know, we we definitely. Want to get there as part, especially as part of that first goal.
And I would just add on to that, that I think more than ever, it's important to look inward and not always outward. For her clearly around this, because the pandemic created so many different educational environments and situations. And different districts were able to reach and teach kids differently over the last couple of years, that I think. You know, really being able to look at our own students and see where they are and understand what programming they particularly need. And which kids are showing up as the most vulnerable in Winchester, because I appreciate national scores. And they do give us a good picture of what's happening as a nation, but I feel like so much, especially in Massachusetts, so many of the schools with local control. Manage things on, really on their own, and really they were figuring it out on their own, so. What I really like about goal number one is really examine, really deeply examining our own practice and our own kids, so.
Thank you. And just before my battery runs out. And just before my um battery runs out, um, sorry, if I can get out of here. And while we have Mr. Nixon still on the line, because I still have battery power, um, maybe getting ourselves into the executive session.
Yep. Um, so uh, we will anticipate it agenda items for the next meeting. Um, certainly, uh, we heard, uh, we will be looking at the budget again. Um, we will uh, we will come back to the school committee goals and continue to the discussion we began this evening. Um, we will hopefully finally be able to get the October enrollment report from Dusty and be able to take a look at that. And um, any policy updates that are ready, um, we wanted to just put a placeholder for that in case there are any of those ready to come our way. Um, future meeting dates, November eighth, um, November tenth will be fall town meeting, and then we will meet again on the twenty-second. And we need to adjourn to executive session for purpose three to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the Winchester Education Association, because in an open meeting, they have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the committee, and we will adjourn directly from executive session. Um, and I will need a roll call boat, Mr. Nixon.
Aye.
Oh, sorry. Miss Polanay's on, Mr. Brady, on, this round card. Chair votes I and can adjourn to executive session.
All right. Chris, I'll call you myself.
Sounds good.